Order here for Monday, July 27th, 2020. Having called us to order, I have a nice little flag so we can all say the pledge and follow my agenda. So, and I'll leave and kind of stand instead of sit here and I'm going to move myself off camera. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
Nation of the United States.
Unleashed by your God. Invisible.
Invisible.
Thank you, John.
I can hear the roll call.
Yes. That's your main. Philkins.
Here.
Smiths. Schultz.
Here.
Bunce. Greg.
Here.
Baumann.
Here.
Fent. Putffen.
Here.
We have a form.
Hi, Marcus. Okay, uh, I need an approval here for the agenda here for July 27th, 2020.
No move. No move.
Support.
Second.
Greg.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Smith. Baumann.
Yes.
Bunce. Fent. Schultz.
Yeah.
Philkins.
Yes.
Putffen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on agenda, public comment. Do we have any public? I see none. Okay. Next here, I need approval here of October 14th, 2019. Special meeting minutes. As a note to the public, there were no regular access meetings were held in November, December of 2019, and none January through June of 2020. This is our first meeting in 2020. So, again, I just need approval of minutes from the special meeting October 14th, 2019.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Well, second.
Roll, please.
Fent. Bunce. Philkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And Putffen.
Yes. Thank you.
We're all here this evening here for a public hearing. Public hearing is to consider a request from Chris Atanasov for a special land use to allow for a food mart slash gasoline service station located at 605 North Mitchell Street, a site that is Zone B3 general business. Having read that, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, John. I will provide my staff report as part of a PowerPoint presentation so that it be very easy to follow along the various pertinent portions of the review. After I finish my presentation, probably we should hear from one of the representatives of the applicant to see if they feel I've left out any pertinent facts or issues. And then it would be time to open up the public hearing following that. So, with that, I will start into my PowerPoint. Is everyone able to see the slide?
I do, John.
Okay. The special use application is from Chris Atanasov. The site address is 605 North Mitchell Street. The parcel number is 10-086-0009102. The site is Zone B3 general business. The proposed food mart isn't allowed by right use. However, the gasoline service component requires that the use be approved by a special use permit. So, it's the gasoline service station that is requiring a special use permit. The proposed use must meet all the general and specific design standards contained in the ordinance. A little bit of background on the project. The applicant is proposing to buy the Payne Tire property. The existing building will be demolished and a new food mart and gasoline service station will be constructed on the site. The applicant is proposing to buy an additional 50 feet of property from the lot to the west to add to the development parcel. The proposed project involves relocating a sanitary sewer main to the rear of the building, which has already been reviewed by the city utilities department and has been approved. It would still require a final sign-off when final plans for the utilities are developed. Because the property is located on Mitchell Street and the primary access drive is off of Mitchell Street, the curb cut for the property, which would be changing locations, would have to be finally signed off by the Michigan Department of Transportation. It's my understanding that they've already taken a look at current design and are in agreement with that design. However, we still would need the final written sign-off from the state. To be able to apply for the special use permit, the applicant had to apply for parking variance, which is was based on getting to the point of one space for 250 square feet of gross floor area on the store. The site plan does meet that minimum space requirement, which was approved by variance by the zoning board of appeals. Now, this is a aerial photo of the site. You can see the site is the corner property directly behind the property or to the west. You can see a long, narrow building. Actually, with that kind of outbuilding, outcropping, actually, it extends onto an adjoining property. This, as you take a good look at this, it'll become a pertinent factor later on when we discuss some of the access issues related to the site. This is a view of the front of the building showing the tire facility and how the site looks today. These are additional photos showing the condition of the property and starting to show some of the adjacent land uses. This metal box here, that's something that when, one of the conditions I'll be recommending for approval is to when we cite the final monument sign for the project, that we make sure that we have some site visibility between that silver box and the monument sign. The uses that are immediately adjacent to the property, immediately to the north, you have the Lakeside Auto Wash. So, keeping sort of in that auto theme, across the street to the south, you have Maggie's Restaurant. To the west, you have the vacant building that I referred to earlier. And then directly across the street to the east, you have the little bit, that little shopping plaza, shopping mall. To show a little bit more of the character of the area beyond that, which is just immediately adjacent, I included some additional photos, which includes the adult novelty shop and House of Hunan Restaurant, rug cleaning service, Speedway Gas Station, and Funeral Home. The proposed use is for a 50 by 80 foot building, which is 4,000 square feet of gross floor area, and that is for a food mart and a gasoline service station. There are three regular fueling stations and one diesel fueling station, and there are 17 proposed parking spaces. This is the most recent site plan submitted. I believe you were all sent an original copy as part of several sheets, and this, this plan was subsequent, subsequently submitted after further discussion with the applicant. So, this is the site plan that we're basically looking at and making judgment as to the approval on this special use. The next two slides show the various building elevations. As you can see, there's a variety of building materials being used. I think it's a pretty clean and sharp design, and I do believe it is keeping with the character and quality of the area, buildings in the area. This slide shows the various fueling station canopies and signage that would be contained on those canopies. Those canopies and the signage are in keeping with ordinance standards, and we do, we do not have any issues with those structures as it relates to the ordinance. The applicant has proposed what we've been working with a number of developers on, which is to move to a monument style sign for the corridor, the Mitchell Street corridor. The speed limit there is 25 miles an hour, and the days of needing a 30 or 40 foot high sign are gone as traffic is slowed down to a very slow speed, and actually gives better viewing quality to the information on the sign if it is kept at that level. The proposed sign does meet our sign requirements, and there's no issues with the zoning ordinance with what they are proposing. Some of the findings for the site plan. The proposed site does meet all of the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. The parking spaces are met by virtue of the zoning variance that they were able to obtain. And the proposed Mitchell Street curb cut is going to be only a right turn-in, right turn-out only. So, a little bit of a limited motion out of that driveway, and I think that was per MDOT's recommendation. And again, we'll end up needing a final approval from MDOT, final sign-off on the curb cut. The two curb cuts on North Street, they've been reviewed by the city's engineer, and they both meet city standards, and the radiuses were found to be acceptable. The landscape proposal on the site plan meets all ordinance standards, and the signage, as I mentioned earlier, again, meets all zoning ordinance standards. That's not only on the building, but on the canopy structures. There is one decorative light, which has to be removed, which is out on Mitchell Street, and I'll be putting in the recommendations later that that light be relocated to the south of the proposed new driveway off of Mitchell Street. The original submittal had insufficient information to complete drainage review. We have requested the applicant submit more of the drainage information, and the drainage will be reviewed by the city's engineer, and they will report back whether it's acceptable for our city standards.
John?
Yes.
This is Mayor Philkins. Could we please ask everyone who that isn't speaking to mute their microphone because we're picking up a lot of background noise?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, I think that helps.
As media organizer, you can also mute the other people that are in attendance, and then they can always unmute themselves if they want to talk.
Okay. Yeah, I'm showing all but Craig being muted right now, Craig Richardson.
I have my phone actually on.
Oh, okay. All right. The lighting plan that was submitted on the site plan was reviewed by our city engineer, and she found the majority of the site to be in full compliance with city standards. One exception would be that she felt it was a little dark on the rear access drive to the west of the, to the west of the proposed building, and is recommending that one or two additional lights be added in that area. So, later on, there will be a recommendation for additional one or two lights be added to the site plan to be reviewed by the city engineer. The private sidewalk system that is provided is connected to the public sidewalk system, and that's something that we had worked out earlier and would, is appropriate for the Other site issues, which are kind of gets into some of the extraneous issues, and I'm not sure, some of these things, what factor they might be. I wasn't sure if, given the notice for this meeting, whether adjoining property owners would be in attendance. Historically, there, there has been a private alley, and I stress the word private, which is run behind the proposed building site, and has been used for quite a period of time as an access alley. That recently, maybe in the last year, to some degree, has been blocked from service somewhere around mid-block. Someone has placed a dumpster in the middle of the alley. And while the alley currently has kind of an open appearance, to some degree, it's still being used as it can be, but it's kind of an issue that's out there. It's certainly not a public alley, and so, this plan most definitely would have a bearing on future ability for that alley to function in any capacity, whether, whether that be private or whether that be public. Yeah, what was that? Okay, getting into the specific use standards, there is a section of the ordinance being Section 46, 427, subsection 7, that speaks to a few particular design items that have to be met on the development site. I have reviewed those and found the plan to be consistent with those. And much like many of the other cases that you've acted on, the site also has to meet general special use standards, and those special use standards, general standards are listed in the ordinance, and you've used them on a number of cases. Well, I've summarized them here in terms of my findings relative to each standard. And in that regard, I have found that the proposed special land use has been designed and will be operated in a manner harmonious with the character of the adjacent property. And you can think back to some of the photos I shown, and I think that, that makes sense. The proposed special land use will not inappropriately change the essential character of the surrounding area. I think the building quality needs to exceed some of the other buildings in the area, so I think what they're proposing is, is not going to cause a decline in, in the immediate area. The proposed special land use will not interfere with the general enjoyment of the adjacent property. The one possible consideration of that might lend one to think of the access for adjacent properties, but again, because it is a private alley, there is no guaranteed access from one parcel to another as currently exists in that law. The proposed special land use will represent an improvement to the use or character of the property and be in keep with the natural environment of the site. The site currently does not have a natural features. It's hard surface. It will remain majority hard surface, but in fact, will be a little bit softer in its look because of the proposed landscaping around the east and east. Let's see, I think it's on the, yeah, the front on the east side and then the south side as well. The proposed special land use will not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses, activities, materials, equipment, which will be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of persons or property through the excessive production of traffic, noise, odor, fumes, or flare. This is actually a, probably a lower intensity use, at least in terms of things that might involve odors or noises, just more or less general retail, which the retail portion, in fact, could be approved by right if it didn't have a gasoline service station. So, I think we're not going to see any real negative impact from this proposed use. The site will now, as it opens and in the future, be served appropriately by public utilities, and the proposed use does not exceed the ability of our utility department to service the site. And the proposed use is consistent with the intent and purpose of this chapter and also consistent with the city's long-range plan. That, that kind of takes me through the, the staff report and presentation. I guess I would ask at this time from a representative of the applicant, whether they feel they would like to add some comments or statements that I may have missed, or whether I've captured the essence of their project.
Yeah, it's Craig here. No, I think you did a very good job, and I think you covered everything very well, and yeah, I really don't have much to add. Everybody's seen the revised site plan, so I don't think, I really don't have anything else at the time. Thank you.
Okay. I guess with that, John, if you wanted to open the public hearing.
Okay.
We, we can come back to my recommended motion after you hear from, from the public.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are there currently gasoline tanks on that site?
No.
Now, we don't believe so, no.
Oh, there isn't.
Great. Thank you. So, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Anyone in our audience reviewing that is in favor of this proposed change to 605 Mitchell Street, please call in, or I don't know what happens, so please do something. Again, this is in favor of this proposal for Chris Doyle. Okay, let's word it differently then. Anyone that may be in our audience that is not in favor of this moving forwards on 605 Mitchell Street with Chris Doyle, please reach out to us. I guess with everything being quiet, everything is good. At this time, I guess I will close the public hearing unless board members have any comments.
Hey, John, I got here late, like corporate computer wouldn't let me get on. So, I just have a couple questions to bring me up to speed.
Sure, do I have Kevin now?
Yeah, this is Kevin Fent.
Okay.
Is, is this one be open 24 hours?
No, it's, no, it's not.
Okay, so you have hours of operation, six, six to 10, something like that.
6:00 AM till 10:00.
Do you have operating hours?
Yeah, like 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM during the week.
And then till midnight on.
And then till midnight on weekends.
Okay. There's actually somebody asked you that. Okay, that's, that's all I really had to ask. I'm sorry it took you so long to get here.
If, if you want. When we get to the, the motion, certainly you could include a condition on hours of operation if you felt that was appropriate.
No, John, somebody had asked me if it was going to be 24 hours or whatever. I just think they're curious. I don't think they had any leaning one way or the other.
Okay.
This is Mike Coy. I'd like to ask, Chris, is that you answering that question, or is that Fred?
Chris is here, yep.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Want to mention that to him?
Pending legislation.
Yeah.
Refueling hasn't been approved because on the floor of the state, I'm having a hearing last Wednesday, Senator up here in the room briefed me in and asked me some questions, but that's hopefully soon to be approved. So, 24 hour unattended refueling credit card. Hey, John, I got here late. My corporate computer wouldn't let me get on. So I just have a couple of questions to bring me up to speed.
Sure, do I have Kevin now?
Yeah, this is Kevin.
Okay.
Is this going to be open 24 hours?
No, it's not.
Okay, so you have hours of operation, 6:00, 6:00 to 10:00, something like that.
6:00 AM till 10:00.
Do you have operating hours?
Yeah, like 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM during the week.
And then till midnight on weekends.
Okay. Actually, somebody asked me that. Okay, that's all I really had to ask. I'm sorry it took you so long to get here.
If you want. When we get to the motion, certainly you could include a condition on hours of operation if you felt that was appropriate.
No, John, somebody had asked me if it was going to be 24 hours or whatever. I just think they're curious. I don't think they had any leaning one way or the other.
Okay.
This is Mike Coy. I'd like to ask, Chris, is that you answering that question or is that Fred?
Chris is here, yep.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Want to mention that to him?
Pending legislation.
Yeah.
Refueling hasn't been approved because on the floor of the state I'm having a hearing last Wednesday. Senator up here in the room briefed me in and asked me some questions about it. But that's hopefully soon to be approved. 24-hour unattended refueling credit card.
I have a question, John.
Okay.
It looks like the only difference between your two recommended motions involves the western property line. And obviously, that was a big part of your presentation as well about this private access alleyway, which isn't actually anything. Who actually owns the ground that's on?
Well, the applicant is acquiring 50 feet beyond their current west line of the parcel. The property beyond that, I believe, is owned by the same person that they're acquiring the 50 feet from.
And the alleyway will now be owned by Chris?
Uh, that's correct. In fact, I've actually gone, I've updated my motion to a single motion. I was in contact with the designer for the applicant today. And I proposed another design solution, which they looked favorably upon. In fact, I could pull that up on my screen so that you can see that. Hold on a second. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. My thinking is that if the property owner to the west would grant another seven feet of permanent easement for the purposes of access and driveway construction, that seven feet would actually open up an entire parking bay for the building to the west. I don't believe we could approve another curb cut so close to the one that was shown as a one-way aisle as originally submitted. And so I looked at the situation to see how it could be changed. And with this design, the applicant would only have to give easement rights to the two-way 24-foot aisle to the rear and wouldn't have to give them easement access across the balance of their site. I didn't think it was a good idea for traffic to be coming off Mitchell to be traveling to this vacant building to the west to confuse traffic with that building with the traffic that's using the gasoline pumps in the convenience store. And so I thought it was really important to try to get a two-way drive here. And so that does two things. It lets, well, it gives Chris at least two more parking spaces beyond what the zoning board appeals approved. It gives the property owner to the west at least 12 parking spaces to serve their eventual use for that building. And it limits the easement access rights that would be needed to be granted to the property owner to the west. The other thing it does, I'm proposing that the easements go all the way to the north properly, property line. But I'm also suggesting that they could block it off, you know, three, five, six feet from the property line so that it's not being used in an alley. But if the easement was there all the way to the north line, if they were able to negotiate with adjoining property owners an appropriate continuation of that alley, then that could easily be opened back up and work with a design that was actually designed to flow with the rest of the alley. And at some point in time, a decision could be made whether that would remain private or if it went far enough, perhaps it could be considered a public alley. But at least it leaves the door open to a lot of options and doesn't shut the door on anybody. And I think it optimizes everybody's development potential and makes it a lot safer for access purposes. So that's kind of what I came up with. And Craig, you may want to respond to how that's been received on your end.
Hey, Mr. Wallace, this is Chris here. You know, you keep moving the goal lines, okay? We're trying to play a game here. We're trying to get to the end so we can get this project rolling. Come on, you're making it too complicated. I got an agreement with Mr. Bates. He's the adjacent property owner. I'm buying that land from him. He's got a perpetual easement that travels with the sale of his property with access off a north street. He's happy, I'm happy, okay? That's old right away from the railroad, from 100 years ago, okay? The train used to go through there. It's not an alley. I don't know where you're getting these ideas with this alley. It's a railroad grade that went through there, okay? And it needs a lot of work because we got back on environmental, working on it. You know, the trains go through, every time the train went through, they drip oil. You know what I'm saying? So we're trying to work this through and let's not make it too complicated. It's getting too complicated.
Well, the fact of the matter is, it is complicated because you're trying to put a lot of development on a site that I think most of us have felt was rather a very small site to begin with. And you can't ignore the historic use of adjoining properties. As you saw when I showed the standards, that we have to consider the adjoining businesses. And even though it might be complicated, it's still what our ordinance calls for this board to do, which is to look at what the impact. And I cannot see where, if somebody wanted to activate that building to the west and then all of a sudden finds out, oh, I don't really have appropriate access, I don't really want to encounter that issue at a later date.
Not up to you.
No, it's not up to me. It's up to this planning board.
Yeah, I think that's the point. I mean, I'm not, it's a private, it can still be an alleyway even if it's not an easement, respectfully to the applicant in this case. That doesn't mean there's any legal right to it. And that's what I'm concerned about. I couldn't care less if it's previously used as an alleyway. And I don't think it's this board's or commission's determination that necessarily determine whether something that may have been used in the past could be used in the future. If they have rights to this property, let's put the, I suggest, we put the recommended motion in front of us and see what that says related to the alleyway. If somebody wants to fight over whether there's a prescriptive right to travel across those, we may get to see Chris, and that's not our problem.
Well, besides the alley, the issue is the use of the property to the west. I would almost bet that when it comes time to develop that property to the west, we will all of a sudden be incurring a great deal of issues that are brought to bear that was a result of this decision, I believe. And maybe that's okay if we have the owner of that property, you know, acknowledged as part of a condition of this approval, that they would have very limited access to their property as a result of this project going forward.
Yeah, I guess my question is, what's our duty to that landowner who's selling their property to these guys to the east?
Well, if we.
I'd be short sighted, but it's not my job to protect them.
Well, it's our job to make sure that it can be put to a reasonable use. And if we block the ability of some of the only available property, and let's not kid ourselves, by approving this other plan, they're taking 50 feet of land that could be used for parking to support that facility. So they're already greatly diminishing.
They've agreed to sell it.
They're greatly diminishing the ability to adequately park the building to the west. And then with the design that they've come up with, they've even further restricted the ability for the property to the west. And, you know, at some point in time, if by city action, we essentially took that property because we left no available opportunity to appropriately have it be used for what it could reasonably use for. In effect, we could even be challenged for a taking.
That I don't understand, John. They're selling it. We're not taking it.
Well, we're, we're basically, it's kind of like when you start trying to approve lot splits, that eventually you get the lot down to where it almost can't service the ability for a house to be held on the unit because we divided land and gave it to somebody else to the point where it became a real issue. I, this is an optional thing. There's no guarantee. There's no right to this special use approval. It requires that they demonstrate that they've taken into account adjoining properties, the servicing of those properties, and the value of those properties. Personally, I think that the property to the west will be severely impacted if we do not do something to improve the access to that site. But again, it's the decision of this board. If you don't feel that way, I guess that would be fine. I just want to be on record as having pointed it out because I've seen these things before and I can see them in advance. And I know what happens in the end.
So he hasn't been going until.
John, do you know if Mr. Bates owns that building to the west?
To my knowledge, yes.
So I, this is Craig here. I just want to clarify, though, that part of the purchase of the 50 feet is granting Mr. Bates use of that. So in perpetuity, so. And he does own the building, yeah.
But it's to exit the property, not to enter the property. You have, he has rights to exit on your drive, but how is he going to gain access to his drive?
I think we're in for that.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to check the wording of the easement, but I don't know if it's that specific or if it just says he gets to use it.
He has access, perpetual easement access.
Yeah. I don't think it's specified currently that he.
He can pull in a Chevrolet, a Hoover built, or a railroad train. It's up to him.
No one's answered my question. I asked a question. How will people access the property to the east of the building, which is to the west of your site? How will they gain access to that, to that area if it's used for parking? It won't be an alley because we just discussed how the alley is no longer functioning.
They could drive in and turn around and drive out or go out on, what's that other, the main street there?
Well, we.
On Mitchell Street.
Well, that's what I was saying in my earlier comments. You would have to give them access rights and we would have to co-mingle the users of that building with the traffic that is using your fueling pumps and your food mart. The traffic going in would be co-mingled on a very tight site, and I don't think that's a good thing.
Look, Greg, so, you know, I think we can work this out. You know, we're talking 6.7 feet, right?
6.77, I'd have to take precise measurements.
Something like, yeah. I just, you know, being that they already have the language in place to access the 50 feet, I don't see the additional seven feet being an issue. You know what I mean, easement-wise?
Well, it wouldn't have, yeah, you wouldn't have to acquire, as we discussed. It could be, it would just be an easement. And actually, that benefits, that benefits the person to the west because that's now. An aisle that he doesn't have to construct and he can actually enter and exit his property.
Sure, not a problem.
Perhaps I should just get back to my motion. I have drafted a motion that I think I would easily support. You can easily change the motion. But let me at least go through the motion. To approve the special land use permit application by Chris to Tennesaw, subject to the following conditions. Final approval by the city's utility department with regard to the relocation of the sanitary sewer main and all utility connections. We've already met with the utilities department. We think that we're there. It's just solidifying and documenting that final approval. The additional lighting be added to the, to the rear of the building and be approved by the city's engineering consultant. And we can negotiate whether that's one light or two. It probably would be at least one light, but we're probably flexible on that. Just something that we could get approved by our city's engineer. The final approval of the Mitchell Street curb cut design by the Michigan Department of Transportation. We, it's my understanding that they've already in favor of the current design. So I'm seeing that as probably not an issue. And the decorative street light that has to be removed from Mitchell Street to make way for the new curb cut, that it be relocated in the vicinity just south of the new curb cut on Mitchell Street. When the drainage plan is complete, that the drainage plan be reviewed and approved by the city's engineering consultant. And when the monument sign is placed, we just want to do a double check that, by the zoning administrator, that the placement does not, leaves a gap between that silver box that I alluded to earlier and the sign so that people approaching the intersection would have some view of the sightlines down Mitchell Street. The other issue that came about because of the tightness of the site, the sidewalks, especially in front of the building, we would have to have a condition of no product display or storage of product there to maintain that as a viable ADA accessible access from the public sidewalk system to the entry of the building.
Go through there.
And I think earlier in my, the last time we had a discussion, I was asking for an increase of one foot in that front sidewalk system in case we get perhaps a foot of overhang on those car stalls. I wanted to make sure that we had a clearance of five feet on that front sidewalk to the front entry. Number nine is the issue we talked about earlier. And it sounds as though there's room for negotiation on how that happens. And then the final easement agreements for the west access drive be approved by the city, the owner of Chris and the property owner to the west. So that whatever easement agreements we reach, that is approved by all three parties. And the satisfactory relocation of the energy poles by Consumers Energy, which I think at this point you feel confident that you'll be able to achieve. So with that, I think we've got to go. If others want to suggest changes, there's certainly that opportunity to do so now.
John?
Yes.
John Smith talking. The easement issue, what are we going to here? I understand that you're going to work that out in the future, use of the building to the west. And is there, are there compromise commentaries from representatives from Chris? And you, sort of a compromise, leaning towards easement issue?
Well, it sounded like a short time ago that securing of just another seven feet, point something or seven feet of easement, rather than purchasing of additional property would allow this all to happen. I guess it's, it's the applicant's call whether they're open to that or want to suggest something else.
And that leave open the use of the side of that other building? For the owner? For the owners?
Would that leave open the use of the building to the west? It would, as I showed on my, uh, redesign, it would, uh, leave them opportunity for at least 12, a bay of 12 or possibly more parking spaces, uh, along their property. Which, uh, depending on what they choose to do, may or may not be enough, but even if it wasn't sufficient, it would be a whole lot closer to, uh, allowing a, a more full use of that building.
You only can use.
What was that? So I guess, you know, um, if, if the applicant wants to respond, whether this recommended motion is, you know, is acceptable, I think, you know, it's something we, at least I could feel good about moving forward with.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement, we can work on that.
Good, okay. Well, um, at this stage, I guess I can, I don't think I've closed public hearings, I want to close public hearings, right? Okay, just to be formal, from here on, John, I don't know if you can bring up, or the board members, your proposals that we need to take a vote on?
Well.
Make a motion?
It would be, it would be the motion that, that, that I've outlined here on, you know, in today's, uh, reworking of the motion.
Joe just made the motion.
Okay.
Anyone to second Joe?
I'll support.
Bad day with the mayor, I support him.
That's a bad day?
Pretty dear.
Well, John could support you.
John Putfin, would you like me to, uh, do the roll call? Uh, does John have to review the, what's on the table? Or is everyone good?
I can go through the slides again if you'd like.
Up to, up to the group. If, if everyone's aware of what is on the table here to be voted on, then it's fine. John, you, and your other John, uh, Smith, look like, do you need to see what the proposal is, John, or are you good?
Could you just put it up for, for looking over again, please? My, my pad cuts off, uh, bottom half of it.
All right, uh, items one through four are on the current slide, when you've had a chance to, to look at that, I can advance it to the next one.
Really? Not showing up on my computer. Yeah, I don't have it.
Wait, oh, here it is, have one more, one more screen to hit.
There we go.
There we go.
Let me know when you've, you're done with slide one.
I'm done with slide one.
Go ahead, John.
That, that, that's the last of the conditions, number 11.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, okay. Mike, I think we're ready.
We're good. Baumann?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Luntz? Schultz?
Yeah.
Greg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bent?
Yes.
Putfin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Greg.
Nice place you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, moving, moving along, new business we have none? Old business none? Any board member comments this evening?
Just, uh, meeting with you guys, because I'm selling my house hopefully on Friday, so, I'll be moving out of the city.
Oh.
Say that again.
I'm selling my house on Friday, and so I'll be resigning from the board here, the commission, planning commission. It's been wonderful working with all you guys. We seem to do well together. Well organized, good leadership, John and Marilyn, so.
Well, thank you for all of your time, John.
Yes, thank you.
Well, Mr. John.
I'll be around up.
Okay. Uh, no communications to take it, John?
Nothing.
And, public comments, we don't have any public? No other business, correct? Everyone?
No other business.
Other than that, I can bang on Mike's desk and say, we're done. We're adjourned. Thank you.